This conference will now be recorded.
I don't know if you can read it.
EMS, oh, National EMS. We're all doing it. If I read my agenda. You've done this.
I always read down here.
It's five thirty as we to start the meeting. Real call please.
Mr. Beeson.
President.
Mr. Stover.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mr. Tweedy.
Here.
Mayor Warren.
Here.
If you want to join us in the prayer, please just please stand. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we gather here to work towards a common goal. We ask for your presence to guide and direct our seasons through your will. We know that your will is good for all of our members of our community. We also pray for a police, a fire department, city workers, hospital workers for their safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, that the United States of America and to the republic which is sanctified, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions or relations?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to add a section, item number two under City Manager Department. So it would be a resolution authorizing the city of Arcana to accept a bid submitted by Schaefer Architecture to provide a master plan and design service for an indoor recreation facility and outdoor aquatic center for the city portion amount not to exceed 24,500.
Mayor, I move we approve the agendas presented.
Second.
Okay, we move to second. Any other discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
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 Approve the approval of the agenda.
I move we approve agenda as amended.
Second.
Other discussion on that? Not all favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Words and proclamations. We have a proclamation of May 1925, 2024, National EMS Week in Arcana City. I think.
That's so. Your closest.
From the opposite of the mayor of Arcana City, Kansas, proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public need and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves both the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system, first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating National EMS Week, which was first formalized on November 4th, 1974, by President Gerald Ford. This year marks the 50th anniversary of EMS Week. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Arcana City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the week of May 19 to 25th, 2024, as National EMS Week. In Arcana City and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities and recognize this year's theme, honoring our past, forging our future.
I was told you was going to say, read it, so. I just want to say thank you guys for what you do. I mean, it's a tough job and we appreciate hard work and the sacrifices you guys put in, so thank you for what you do.
Mayor, do we need to get a picture of?
Yes.
As you're.
Picture up there.
On here, okay.
Oh, guys.
What do you have on? Go on. I kind of want to hand that to you. Oh, now you're. Got to get a good picture of you. Yes. Thank you.
approximately 20 inches by 20 inches, staked in with a couple of small diameter wires in the grass. Cali Pride advertises itself as a nonprofit pro LGBTQ organization and event and it's not a division of the city or a city entity. Because the sign was on public property, taxpayer-funded property, I stopped and picked up the sign all the while live recording on my phone. I caused no damage to the sign or the property. Then I began recording because I know the value of the camera, audio, and didn't want anyone accusing me of damaging or destroying property. I then entered the library with the sign still recording and approached the male library staff member asking why the sign was on public property. Large portion of the library's clientele are minors and children and the library primarily uses art and activities geared to attract minors. The staff member told me that was because the library supports and participates in the Cali County Pride event and that the city and the library board of trustees approved the LGBTQ sign. I told the staff member the sign was inappropriate on library grounds and that the library should not be targeting children with the adult-themed LGBTQ agenda. I made the point that the sign should not be used on public property which is funded with taxpayer monies. The librarian told me that I should then talk to the city about it. I asked who with the city should I talk with and he said I don't know. I asked him if I could take the sign with me to the city where I would locate the appropriate person to speak with. He told me no, he would like to have the sign back. I handed him the sign back and advised him that I would go to the city and discuss the matter. My schedule did not permit me going to the city before 5 o'clock Thursday. I just couldn't make it. On Friday, May 17th, while returning from the post office, I again noted the sign had been reposted out on the lawn. I parked, began recording again, and picked up the sign while entering the library. Again, neither the sign nor grounds were in any way damaged by this action. I approached the same male staff member and asked why the sign had been returned, after I'd already pointed out that the grounds were public property, and that I'd already voiced my objections to it being on public grounds. Before I could discuss with him further, a female staff member quickly entered the area from the back. She was angry and began addressing me in a raised voice, telling me I had no right to be there and taking their sign. Presuming she was the library director, Ms. Fantastile, I tried to tell her I wanted to talk with her about the sign, but she would not allow me to speak by talking over the top of me. I tried to tell her again, but this time she quickly approached me, telling me, "I want my sign back, and you need to leave now." While still recording, I handed her the sign and promptly left the library without protest. My goal was to avoid a scene and avoid the possibility of any avoidable trespass charges for refusing to leave as directed. Shortly after this, I received a phone call from Arc City PD. The officer asked me about the incident, and I explained it fully to him. He advised me that I was officially trespassed from the library, and to return to the library would be met with a citation to appear in court and possible arrest. I assured him that I respected the order and would seek resolution by different means. I then met with the city manager and the mayor, explaining the matter to them. I was advised that there is city code against signage being placed on public property. Chief of Police Holloway was also present and told me that he has personally received several complaints from the public about the signage, yet Ms. Fantastile still did not bring the library into compliance with city ordinances. After leaving the meeting at the city building, I received a private message from a person named Tel Fantastile via Facebook Messenger. This person chastised me for not being a supporter of the LGBTQ community, causing a problem, yelling at his mom and brother, and telling me, "You have some mixed-up feelings in yourself." Later that evening, he deleted all of his messages that he had sent. I did copy the first one sent before he got to delete it. Now, I'd like to cite four major points for the record tonight. Point one, the library is public property, and it's funded by four mills, from my understanding, totaling about $296,000 in taxes annually. Municipal Code Chapter 50-227 Public Property states, "No portable or removable sign or other encroachment may be maintained or allowed to remain on public property." Municipal Code Chapter 50-228 Minor Sign, "No minor sign, the support which is placed or fashioned or fastened in any manner in the ground, should be maintained or allowed to remain." The term "minor sign" means any sign or advertising device having a material value less than $200. Point number two, the director, Ms. Fantastile, made a false police report of disorderly conduct against me and filed a trespass order. I believe she did this because, excuse me, she feels strongly regarding the LGBTQ agenda and use this as retaliation for my bringing the matter to her attention. Video evidence contradicts the allegation of disorderly conduct. The library should also have security cameras which refute the director's claims. Point number three, despite no charges being filed, I have been denied due process to even present a defense before my rights as a taxpayer to access library resources for my business and personal needs have been revoked. I've had no opportunity to defend myself, which is a denial of my due process rights. And the final point, this matter could have been avoided has Ms. Fantastile and her library been compliant with the municipal code and had not been emotional in her personal beliefs. At a minimum, Ms. Fantastile should have been willing to discuss the matter with me in a diplomatic manner as opposed to becoming emotional and retaliatory. In summary, Ms. Fantastile's retaliatory actions have cost me my rights to due process under the law. I've had no opportunity to present my case and my defense, which has resulted in my denial of access to business and personal resources contained on public property. As a business owner and taxpayer, I should have a right to have access to these resources. I respectfully petition the city to resolve this matter at the lowest level possible, to review the incident and discuss with the city attorney or legal, if necessary, weighing the matter in its entirety, considering the evidence presented and the decisions made by the library director, Ms. Fantastile. I also respectfully petition the city to revoke this unjust and retaliatory trespass order and restore my rights to access this public resource without bias, so as to avoid any further need for action to restore my rights. And thank you for your time.
Is there other comments from the audience? Okay, Randy, you might talk about, we talked about that thing, that signs, that what we're...
Yeah, so I met with Larry today. You know, we have our sign ordinances. There is a section, 2021 Dashboard, that prohibits any signs on city-owned governmental-type properties. And so that's some of the things that we're looking at, is making those clear. So the way it would be interpreted is there's no signs at all. So this week, we started enforcing that on, like, Wilson Parks, kind of signs accumulate. And so we've asked folks that had signs there to remove them. And so we'll kind of stay on that. And then Larry and I and Josh will be working on some potential ways to look at signs differently. And I'm not sure what that looks like, because we've got to make sure we don't discriminate against anybody on that. So I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
Yeah, I would just say that the gentleman cited some ordinances and correctly cited the ones that were there, but there are other ordinances, another chapter, that subsections and exclusions conflict with that and can be read different ways. So we met today, and I think we do review that and take that. The part we're looking at would actually go to the planning commission. Take a look at this as a whole and see if we need to review this. Several years ago, as my understanding, they were reviewed in light of a Supreme Court ruling that had to do more with election signs. So there was some new ordinances made regarding election signs, which are about the same size as those, and another subsection that quoted with that. I think it's time to look at those again and make sure it's clear what you all expect. So we plan on doing a review of that. I think by the next work session, have something to bring to you all to sort of free to look at, see what direction you want to go with signage on public property.
Okay, my question, since he's been reframed to go in the library, what can, how can that be straightened out? Or from that police report thing?
Well...
That might be something we need to speak with privately.
Yeah.
That's a private issue, isn't it?
It could be. Maybe you want to start an executive session, but you know, that's all I'll say at this point, yeah.
And then when you guys look in on it, the only thing I would say is, I'm conflicted on this. Because we have in Wilson Park, Farmer Market, Juneteenth coming up, Arkalala, Taco Lala, we put signs up. If we're going to eliminate all signs, Dylan's going to have to take down all their signs.
Well, no, 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 just on city-owned...
I mean, it's on this side of the sidewalk.
It could have a move, but yeah, any of those signs can be put on private property. So any business that would be willing, or any homeowner that would be willing to have them on their property, there's nothing in ordinances that prevent that. So it really just comes down to city-owned property, so it's not banning those signs, but yeah.
But there's some verbiage that confuses that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I wasn't aware that you signed something to speak when I came here.
Well, you're fine, you're fine. Come on up here to the podium.
Yeah.
I want to say something real quick. You brought up Dylan's, and you brought up just the fact that I...
You need to state your name and address.
And I put on Juneteenth.
Your address.
My address, 1524 Rockland Street, Arc City. I was one of those people who were called last week to remove the signs for Juneteenth. My concern with all of it, the sign removal and lengthy saying no signs allowed on city property, is that, like the Dylan's thing, Dylan's might not be part of properties with your city property. But there's a lot of people who get their means of communication, information of what's happening in our community, they have those signs. And I think that they don't have access to the newspaper, they don't have access to social media, and the different ways that people are marketing and promoting their information that creates the livelihood and the way that we do things in our community. And Wilson Park has been one of those places that, until now, you guys have allowed us to use. And to call us and say that we have to remove those things, I feel like it's something that should have been done after the work session and after those decisions were made, and not now. So I understand this concerns, but I also believe that we should have been notified after you guys have come together and made some decisions, because there were other events that happened just less than 30 days before mine, and then I had to take down my signage. So I would say that that's off the top of my head.
Robin, I think I brought Fourth, Juneteenth, and Taco Lala, and that's where my concern is, is that we hurt the greater good for one sign, and I'm going to just, let me just ask Ms. Fantastile, she's back there. Public libraries across the country, what do they do for Pride Month?
They have displays, they have drag queen story times, they have all kinds of things inside the library, outside the library.
Right, and you've never even considered doing any of that.
We've never done any of that. We've had one Pride sign this year, that's it.
And I want to bring it to you, so one of the words that is in one of the sections that he pointed out is "remain in place." Like, I can't remember exactly which one, but none of these signs remain in place over a certain period of time. So like you said, it's some contradiction in the wording and what, you know, is brought forward. So considering that, but also there's a lot of other cities in the state of Kansas that have more heavy traffic, and if it's a traffic issue versus like a person's inability to ignore a sign and what it says, then I would consider that you guys look at what these other communities do, what it has to do with the right-of-way, our distraction of drivers, and if we don't have pedestrians or people who are driving complaining about this and that as well.
Robin, I think that's one of the things we're going to consider when we move the ordinance.
And I think, what you said, the time limits, you know, a week or two weeks or something like that, as it comes up, you know?
Or like a certain amount of feet from the sidewalk or certain things like that. But if I could be a part of those conversations, I'm more than willing to be.
There's good news, bad news. They're down right now, but Juneteenth is still 20 days away, so we may have time to get them back, you know?
And I'll be here for the proclamation. To do the proclamation, the city acknowledges Juneteenth as a federal holiday now, and so I'll be here at the next meeting to do the proclamation. And I will hope that next year, we will have an issue with signage.
And she makes a good point, that there are different rules in place now for temporary signs versus permanent signs. But there's an issue in that that needs to be looked at.
My name is Tammy Lemon Henderson. My address is 1114 North Tinsley here in Kansas City. And my daughter said, that is my daughter, she said a lot of things already that I don't have to say, but I did want to say this, that I read, I was reading yesterday on an email that it sent to me, and it talked about if an event is not a city event or brought on something by the city or something, then these signs like cannot be in those places there. So as far as Taco Lala, Juneteenth, Arkalala, to me, those are city events put on by the community, the people that will live here, pay the taxes out there. So these events that we've been putting on are for the whole community, for the city of Arkansas. So then there should be some exemption for that, or make something you guys need to look for. To me, that is a city event. All these events, the place are city events. These signs are being put there in Wilson Park, that they're city events. Farmer Market, that is a city event. It has the same thing on a different day.
Well, it's going to be a good exercise for us, for those guys to look at and see what they come up with, you know? But we're going to have to change, and hopefully we'll get it right.
Well, I don't know that you will have to make a change, the antique as it is, and with some, maybe some suggestions.
Cross the T, just cross the T.
Jill Hunter, 1521 North Third, Arc City. Is it possible to make a temporary exception for the Farmer's Market? They depend on people knowing about where it is. Creekstone Farms spent $300,000 on the pavilion up there. We don't want to have to move it to a different location because we can't put Sonya out. Is it possible to do a temporary exception for Farmer's Market? Or would you look into that? Because that could really impact the people coming to the market. I know, I know when it is every day, and I drive by and forget about it. And, you know, just the signs out there, they do grab attention. Those people are trying to represent, so if we could work on a temporary exception for that, I would appreciate it.
Well, a temporary exception would be requiring amended ordinance, so I don't know. I don't think we can move any faster.
What for a mortgage on Tuesday?
So we got a week.
They're there right now.
I don't know that you can move this a week, because you've got to get, again, the planning and zoning commission, this is a, really goes to them first before it comes to you guys. They have to make a recommendation to change the zoning ordinance, so.
Planning Commission doesn't meet till June, right?
I'm not sure when their next meeting is.
It's the second Tuesday.
In the meantime, private property is okay?
Private property is okay.
Yeah, absolutely. All we're talking about, yeah, all we're talking about is city-owned property. This does not affect private property, yeah. So if you find a business or a homeowner or anything like that...
But what about the sidewalk? I know when my dad was in legislature, you couldn't put it on that sidewalk. Is that a thing? Does it matter to be on this side?
Technically, it's supposed to be.
Do you want to say something?
If I could just...
Yeah, I'll come up here.
Missy, I'm the director of the Arc City Public Library. I guess if you need my address, 15 Pinup Drive. So for decades, ever since I have worked at the library, we have typically put up signs of events that we've partnered with, events that we have sponsored. A lot of times, it's not so much an endorsement of maybe what they are doing. In this case, I think that there's probably, it's hard for people to disassociate the Pride event with some political rally, which it's not what that is. It's a cultural event. It brings awareness to a marginalized group. It's supposed to foster inclusion and acceptance. And that's why we participate in that, because libraries are about education and information, and that is a big part of why we would partner with an organization like that. And so at that event, we give away books, we have craft projects, we help people with voter registration. It's all very neutral kinds of things, and so that is how we participate in that event. And now, as far as Mr. Hicks coming to the library twice, and him being trespassed on the property, when my staff feels harassed, when they feel intimidated, when it feels like it could become dangerous, I feel like that is our right to be able to ask someone to leave when they're in that kind of a situation. Physically grabbing items off of someone's property, coming in right away, being confrontational, and recording people during that whole process, that's intimidating. That's scary. The first gentleman he spoke with when he came into the library probably did misspeak. I wish that, I think in the newspaper article, he had mentioned that he doesn't like confrontation. What other alternative was used before he resorted to confrontation? I don't think there was an alternative, because what could have happened was he could have came to the library, asked to speak... came to the library, asked to speak with the library director, had a civil conversation about it, but at the very beginning, it became confrontational. At that time, we did not have any sort of guidance on what the regulation, the ordinance is, because I think that's something that's still probably being worked on, because I think it is kind of gray, it's not exactly clear. In our interpretation of how that reads, we feel like we should be able to, I think it reads that the city or governmental entity, and we are another governmental entity. And so we've never questioned that, we've always been able to put signs like that out like that before. We've had community health department signs, we've had Juneteenth, Taco Lala, recently we had a read-and-stroll literacy event that we advertised. So we've had all kinds of things, and in all of these years that I've ever been the director, 10 years, I'm sure even before that, we've always been able to place these signs, and there's never been anyone who has tried to protest the sign ordinance in regard to that. So I think it's a very targeted attack based on what it was, and it's a shame that because of what it was, this could run the opportunity for any other community event to be able to advertise on city property. And you could say that you can advertise that on private property, and that's fine, but that doesn't work for a lot of different events that we have in this community. That's one of our best ways to be very visually present in being able to advertise that. So I apologize for my other son messaging, he will definitely get a few words, although that is him acting as a private citizen, but that doesn't give him a free pass in my house. So, but I think he was protecting his mother and his mother's feelings, so. But otherwise, the trespassing is because we felt intimidated. I don't know Mr. Hicks, I don't know his disposition, all I know is the two times he has entered the library building, taking property from our building, recording us, very aggressively complaining about something, and I don't know, I don't know if he has a weapon, I don't know what kinds of mental state he is in, I don't know him. And so I'm protecting my staff, and I'm protecting the library. We had patrons in the library when this happened, it's embarrassing, it upsets and interrupts library operations. So that is why that happened, we partner with them because they are a community organization, you might not agree with it, it's extremely simple to just ignore the sign, it's extremely simple to drive by Island Park during the event and ignore it, but it's not okay for us as a government entity to discriminate against them because of who they are. And that's not what libraries are for, so happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you.
Well, anybody else?
To have to do with that, I talk on the agenda stuff, can I?
Yeah.
Didn't plan on saying anything. Steve Young, 1118 North 10th, I just want to put my two cents in on the street deal. I disagree with you dropping 70 grand to do that, makes sense, but I don't see it as necessary. What I was surprised about was that we're a 100-year-old town, we don't have a plan for maintaining the street, but we have professionals that are drawing wages, you know what I'm saying? The other thing, Commissioner Beeson, I'm a little concerned about is, if we advance this to where we buy our little flurry machine, or whatever it might be, what provisions have you got for additional payroll? You mentioned something about if we have a plan, we start out on this street, we get called, oh, we don't get called away, we're gonna stick on this. Life goes on, you know what I'm saying? You got entire companies that come down and do sections of roads, they don't get called away to another job. I'm just kind of voicing my, putting my plug nickel in, you know what I mean? I don't like, I'd be all for you if I didn't see new fleets of four-wheel-drive, four-door pickups, if they hadn't tried to slap me with a 70% increase on my property tax, there's some hospital issues going on. I don't mean to be a turd. We got a national laws that has morphed the feelings more, and I'll offend people, I just speak out and say what I want to say. And I just wanted to tell you, I don't agree with that 70 grand for that deal. We know what the arteries are, 8th Street, they run up and down, 2nd Street, they run up and down that, both are paved roads. I don't need AI with little Google pictures being taken and assess, those are ones that need attention.
Well, I tell you what, Steve, if you will get with me after the meeting, I'll be more than happy to talk with you.
Well, anytime, but I'm not saying, you guys move on forward, you're not gonna win me over.
Hey, I don't have to win you over in all of this. Just brought up a couple of issues when you were saying that, and I've got some answers for you, and I'd love to talk to you.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Well, that's it.
Yeah, the last thing is, there's a financial summary there, make sure you take a look at that.
Looking for a German, so I'm gonna...
All in favor, say aye.